So we go out and win that game that night.
Well, it seemed to work for you, right?
Yeah, we were.
All the way home. Well, I just want to welcome you all.
Welcome you all here this evening. This is an exciting time for us. You know, I was trying to think earlier today, you know, what I would say to all of you because, you know, you're my heroes. I mean, you're an incredible team and we were so proud of you all through the season and particularly at the end when you brought the championship trophy home. But I thought, you know, I decided to go out and look at the last Des Moines Register article that was written about your big win on that Friday evening. And I don't think I could say anything better than what they said in this article. So I'm going to share it with everyone here in the event that you didn't read the article prior to this evening. And I'm not going to read the entire thing. I'm just going to highlight it. But it starts out with comments to the fact that the Johnson High School Boys Baseball Team toppled Dowling Catholic 11 to 1 in Friday's Class 4A title game at Dwayne Bakesfield in Iowa City. The win gives Johnston its fifth baseball championship since 2008 and its third since 2017. Absolutely amazing. Then it goes on and it talks about how the Dragons had an emphatic run from May to July. The dominance showed up again Friday as the Dragons shook off an early 1 to 0 Dowling Catholic lead and erupted for nine runs in the second and third innings. The six-run second was certainly maroons aided, but good teams don't miss taking advantage of opponents' mistakes. The first seven Dragons were on in the second with only three of those reaching on-base knocks. Meanwhile, the Maroons had as many errors and hit by pitches in the frame as Johnston had hits. The Dragons exited with a 6 to 1 advantage while severely deflating Dowling in the process. The Maroons finished with five errors. And then Coach Barra says, "There are probably 250 pitches in a game and we're going to give everything we've got to every pitch. And in that second inning, we took advantage of inside pitches, not swinging at bad pitches, and we got our pitch. We crushed it. It was a huge inning. It put us on the way." Like I said, I couldn't have said it better than that. You guys are amazing, just absolutely outstanding. Thank you for being here with us this evening. Coach? Where is he? Okay. Okay, okay. Well, you know, Coach Barra has done an amazing job over the years, you know, teaching all of you how to play baseball and do it in just a super way. And so we do want to congratulate him this evening as well as the entire baseball team. Are you all coming back next year or are you some of you? Every one of you are coming back? Is that right? Wow. None of the seniors? Okay, so all of you guys are going to be back. Well, that's amazing. You know, you've created some great expectation for us and we're looking for a good run next year as well. But, you know, we know you'll always do your best and play as hard as you can. So, anyway, with that, I don't know if, do any of you, do any of you want to say something? I mean, was it? Sam?
First of all, I just want to say thank you to Coach Campbell. He gave me a lot of great hitting tips. Thanks. And all these guys are great and we're going to be back next year.
Yeah. Do we invite the entire council down to be in the photo?
Yeah.
Yeah, you did a great job. See you next year. Well, was that fun or what? We've got a lot of great kids in this community. Very talented and just wonderful, wonderful kids. We're still in our public communications. Do we have anyone in the audience that would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda?
Adams, come up. He'd like to make an introduction this evening.
Many in the council participated over the last year in the strategic planning sessions for JEDCO. And the next big step in that process was hiring a new executive director. Just today, I think the paperwork got signed and delivered. So we'd like to welcome Jennifer Sayers up. Introduce yourselves, tell us about any state championships you may have won.
I have no athletic abilities.
Oh, we all do.
So my name is Jennifer and today is my first official day on the job. And a little bit about my background, I was involved with the Drake Neighborhood Association for about 20 years and served on the board for most of that time and president and all that stuff. And then I also worked with the Des Moines Economic Development Group and I sat on that board as a volunteer as well. Served as president and went to some economic development conferences around the country with them. And so I'm really excited to help this group out and get some things going.
Great, great. Sounds like you have great background for it. Jennifer, what is your last name again?
Sayers.
Sayers, okay, very good. Well, thank you for coming this evening and introducing yourself. And I look forward to working with you in your new role.
Yes, I look forward to getting to know all of you and you'll probably see me at a lot of these meetings.
Very good.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Do we have anything else for public communications? If not, we'll move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings this evening. The first is to conduct a public hearing and consider approval of the first reading of ordinance number 1080, amending chapter 16909 to amend the design guidelines for the Merle Hay Road Town Square Overlay Zoning District, BZK's 22-19. Clayton?
Good evening. Fairly straightforward item for you this evening. This relates to the proposed signage on the town center trellis that would be located at the corner of Northwest 62nd Avenue and Merle Hay Road. The need for the amendment comes from the fact that the sign would be located above the roof line of the trellis and would thus be classified as a roof sign, which is otherwise prohibited by city code. So this provision would carve out an exception for this one sign for this one instance with specific criteria that it would have to comply with. This has been reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission and they have recommended approval. Happy to take any questions or go into further details needed.
Council have any questions for Clayton? Hearing none. Whoops, I didn't open the public hearing. We will open the public hearing at 7:14. Clayton, do you want to just summarize very quickly what you just said?
Brief amendment to allow for a roof sign on the town center trellis at the corner of Northwest 62nd Avenue and Merle Hay Road. Very specific criteria for that sign.
Council have any questions for Clayton? This is a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:15. Do we have a motion to approve first reading of ordinance number 1080? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Number Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 4B, conduct a public hearing and consider resolution number 22-201, approving and authorizing execution of a development agreement by and between the City of Johnston and WC Johnston LLC. And we'll open this public hearing at 7:16. Adam?
I'm pulling open the Westfield documents attachment for me. This action considers entering into a development agreement with WC Johnston LLC. In the agreement, they propose to construct three spec live lightened, excuse me, commercial flex tech buildings at the end cul-de-sac there of Northwest 88th Court. Each of those is going to be approximately 4,500 to 4,800 square feet in size. In total, the investment cost is approximately 3.4 million. It's proposed the city would make up to five consecutive TIF payments of 60% of the increment generated by each of those projects. That would be a maximum amount or do not exceed of $260,000. It would be subject to annual appropriation and each year's TIF tax rate and the Polk County assessor's assessment of each of those commercial buildings. This project is within the Northwest 100th Renewal Plan area, which does allow for the development agreement to occur. And it's the last undeveloped piece of property at the end of this cul-de-sac. The prior buildings have been developed about 15 to 25 years ago. There is an existing foundation on the site. Clayton had mentioned that previously on the site plan approval that does increase the assessed value that exists on this property beyond that you typically see on a greenfield development. That's part of the justification for bringing it forward with cent rebate. That was also considered and approved by council when Setpoint Mechanical was looking at the site to construct their headquarters, which wound up on Windsor Office Court. They were impeded by an existing easement on this property and had that conflicted with their proposed site plan. That project was an estimated $1.8 million facility. When the preliminary plat was approved, there was some discussion about how this building would blend in with the existing buildings on the street. And you can see on the bottom, smaller pictures, an example of a fairly typical commercial building that's on Northwest 88th Court. Brick exterior with a high pitched roof. Each of the three buildings proposed as part of this project would have a flat roof. Cultured stone facade, which is what was previously approved, or as you see there in the top picture, a full brick, full white brick on the front of each of the buildings. The developer had been asked to try to blend in these buildings somewhat with the rest of those commercial buildings. They did ask their architect to come up with the material change, which resulted in this proposed brick alternative. The current development agreement does not require that brick. So if city council does want to require that, that would be amended draft development agreement as part of Exhibit B showing that brick facade. Otherwise, council can consider approval of the development agreement as currently drafted, which would just require what is currently approved in the set plan. Could not approve the development agreement or could again be amended to include the brick requirements. At this point, pause. Happy to address any questions council might have. The developer, John Neelman, is also here in the audience can answer any questions you might have from him as well.
Council have any questions for Adam? Adam or the developer? I'm assuming that since you brought forward a proposal that would include the brick facade, that you're agreeable to that?
It's my second choice, but I did want to be respectful and as requested, agree with what's in, and I would be agreeable to get that to apply.
Okay. I don't remember which council member brought that issue up. Okay. We have a volunteer.
You do. You only have to turn this way usually for that council member who disagrees. I did vote against the original plat and those designs. I don't feel like that that initial proposal met with the character of the other development. I think it's fairly noticeable that it doesn't. I also feel, however, that TIF and the leveraging of TIF funds is one of the few ways in which a city can try to get the type of development and the character it wants within an area. Having said that, I certainly appreciate you working with your architect. It goes a long way to know that someone listens to those who have objections or concerns and tries to come up with some sort of solution. My general statement is the brick versus the cultured stone is not enough of a difference to truly make it worth having to go through those steps. I will support this. I want this area developed. I want Johnston developed thoughtfully. I want us to make sure that we have appropriate development on our tax rolls so that we can continue to provide opportunities for employment in our city as well as then all of the fringe benefits that go with those working in our city. So from all of that being said, the look isn't what I like, but the outcome is more important than the look. And so I really appreciate what you were trying to do there. I don't think that I'm going to be pushing for an amendment even for the design, but I really appreciate you going through those steps.
Other comments? Hearing none. Do we have a motion? Whoops, wait a minute, we're in a public hearing. This is a public hearing on this matter. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the council? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing at 7:23. With that, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-201?
So moved. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving on to the non-consent agenda. Item 7A, consider appointments to the senior citizen advisory board.
Mayor, council, I come to you the third straight meeting to discuss our senior board. Coming to you with 12 different names and kind of taking a little bit different spin on this first year. If you recall, last time, we had some concerns with the number of members and the length of term that we were looking for as far as the board goes. Had a chance to sit down with Jim Sanders and Christine Stone to kind of work out what all the different options would be as far as moving forward, knowing that we want to get this right and we want to do it right as we move forward. So the suggestion is to, instead of creating or appointing this group to a senior board this first year, is to form a 12-member, to start with, steering committee that would make up the names of those that have applied for this. Once again, most of these members were part of the steering committee as we started moving forward last winter, trying to pull together this senior board and really diversify the interests and the gender and the geography of this board. We are just not at a point yet that we can say we want to appoint these nine people for a three-year term. And that's currently what the code indicates that we would need to do. We feel there's more work to be done with the steering committee to shape what the number of members are and that term, as well as do a lot of the functions that needs to occur this year, which is helping direct us with the budget as we start moving forward, starting to put together programs and activities and starting to move things forwards for the seniors. But once again, we want to do this the right way and I really don't want to rewrite the code three or four times over the course of the year as we figure things out. So that's kind of how we came to this conclusion. I wanted to bring it forward as a non-consent item because I want to give you an opportunity to give us more feedback as we move forward. The hope is that we would schedule a meeting in September with this group and start the activities moving forward so we can really start shaping that budget and start shaping some fall activities for the seniors. So with that, I'd take any questions that you may have.
Any questions, council? Counsel, I did give John a call earlier today and I did share with him a concern that I have and that is just about the fact that even though we have really good appointees here and I think generally am supportive of the direction that we're going. And it's my understanding that even though this is just a steering committee, it's not official appointments to any council-created board, I do have a concern that it is not gender balanced. We have been one of the cities, one of the few cities in the state that's had gender balanced boards and commissions now for many, many years. And we are always recognized for that fact. So even though this may not technically be required to have that gender balance, I'm going to be in search of a male to fill that.
I think I found one this afternoon.
Did you? Good, okay, good. To make sure that even though this is kind of a less than formal city board that we do have that gender balance on it. So we have a candidate?
Yep, we have a sixth person.
Very good, well. So we may be bringing another name forward at the next city council meeting. Okay, great. Any other comments or questions?
John, I appreciate you working so hard on gaining interest in this, especially as we came out of the pandemic and not having anyone. So thank you very much and I hope that you will include me as the appointee for the city council to the actual board. I hope you still include me where you can with regard to the steering committee so I can hear their voices as well.
Definitely.
Thank you.
I think one of the things that's really exciting about this group is the diversity and interest. Previously, we had a lot of people that were focused on just doing one thing or another thing, but now we have a group of individuals here who have broad interests and I think we can really bring some new energy and vibrancy to our senior board once we actually get it established and moving forward. So with that, any other comments or questions? If not, do we have a motion to approve the appointment of these individuals to the senior steering committee? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passed. Item 7B, consider resolution number 22-206 establishing the public areas to be designated for the 2022-23 Urban Bo Hunt Program.
I'm going to go ahead and make a couple of quick comments. Dave Kroll's on the line and he is actually our hunt administrator for this year. A couple of things Dave has been working on and I think are going to be very good for the program is he's going to have a mandatory safety meeting with our hunters this year, once they start signing up and getting identified so that I think that'd be a positive move. The other thing is we do typically, tonight's action is to allow hunting on public properties. We also allow hunting on private properties. And as you may recall in the past, we usually have a number of those requests that happen in the fall. Dave's going to narrow that down and try to get all the requests in on two city council meetings so we don't have, you know, basically almost every council meeting, a private property that's being approved for hunting. So I think that'll be real positive as well. It'll help you all do your job a little bit more efficiently and to make those appointments or to make those approvals just in a couple of times as opposed to several of them over the fall. What you have before you this evening, the areas that have been identified that are the map on the screen now, those are the exact same areas that were identified last year and actually for a number of years. So there hasn't been any changes with that. These are all the public areas as Dave had in his report. Area A is actually, even though it's in the city limits, that is managed by the Corps of Engineers. Area B is managed by Polk County Conservation. And then C, D, and E are all managed by the City of Johnston and Dave is being our hunt administrator. So just wanted to make those couple of comments and be open to any questions the city council may have.
Council have any questions? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-206?
I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes, yes.
Motion passed. Item 7C, consider third and final reading of ordinance number 1078, amending the municipal code of the City of Johnston adopted by ordinance number 1010 passed March 4, 2019 by amending chapter 100, Regulation of Industrial Wastewater, Commercial Wastewater, and Hauled Waste.
King Mayor and council members, there's been no changes or comments received on this ordinance. Earlier this morning, I did circulate kind of a brief history of the WRA and the requested information of where other communities are in the adoption of this as well.
Council have any questions for Matt? Matt, I sent you an email this morning thanking you for the work that you done to pull that information together. I thought that was very good background for the agenda item this evening, so thanks for doing that. If there are no questions or other comments, do we have a motion to approve third and final reading of ordinance number 1078?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7D, consider third and final reading of ordinance number 1079, amending the schedule of administrative penalties for violations of the industrial pretreatment ordinance regulating hauled waste and regulating fat, oil, and grease discharge by food service establishments in chapter 100 of the municipal code of the City of Johnston, Iowa. Matt?
Once again, there's been no comments received or changes to the ordinance proposed.
Any questions or comments for Matt? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve third and final reading of ordinance number 1079? So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Further discussion? Cindy, vote please.
Councilmember ready?
Yes.
Burkhardt?
Yes.
Coe?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7E, consider resolution number 22-200, approving the senior bond issuance certificate of WRA participating community.
Evening, Mayor and council. Typically, you wouldn't have seen this WRA certificate for debt. That's why I have it on non-consent this council meeting. I wanted to explain what has occurred. Typically, I as staff and Typically, I as staff and Matt Stufel as our financial advisor have always reviewed those and signed them and we have submitted them to the WRA. Their legal attorney for WRA has asked now that all city councils pass a resolution so that they're assured that all city councils are aware that your staff has been doing such, such things. So, that's why there's so much detail in my staff report to you. When we get those certificates, the WR certificates or bond certificates, as I mentioned in the staff report, there's two tests we have to do for the city. It has to do with our, our bond coverage ratios. And Matt and I work on those together, I guess you could say. And we always know that we're covered or we're not covered and we, we sign off on those. And if there were any issues, of course, I would come and talk about them with the council. In this particular case, the WRA is issuing a substantially large amount of debt and they will be doing so again in the coming years. I was, attended the last WRA Finance Committee meeting and of course, it was brought up. All the cities are facing the same things that we have been facing with our construction costs going up, our project costs going up and everything else going up. And it was mentioned that it would sure be nice if their amount of issuing debt could slow down and, and quite frankly, the response was if you guys quit growing, we'll quit adding to the plant. So, they have to be able to take all the wastewater that's coming from all the communities. So, they have due diligence that they have performed just as well. So, you know, it all goes, goes in accordance. But, the one thing, I wanted to make sure that you did read my staff report completely and that you did note the last paragraph where we talked about we're fine right now, we're fine for the next several years. We passed an ordinance that is raising our sewer rates 9%. It just did in July. It's scheduled to do it again next July and the year after. All of that still appears to be just fine. The only issue would be if we changed timing of projects in our CIP and we moved segments around or we moved segments up or we did something else like that. Things are tight enough that we would be coming back to the finance committee and the whole council as we do every spring saying, this is what's happened now and now we need to look at rates again. Matt nor I see that happening in the next two or three years, but we should be just fine. But should we switch around segment? You know, we're doing A1 now and A2 and then if all of a sudden we decide to do C before B or something like that in the sewer, you know, what is that going to do or what happens if we have to do them both at the same time? Right now, we have them separated. All of those decisions and discussions really do have a ripple effect on our debt, our rates, and everything that we do within the city. And, kind of hammered that home with the department directors last week at staff, I want to make sure that this council is hearing that same message from me. When I talk about the CIP and we talk about moving around stuff, it's not as simple as just moving around stuff. There is an effect. So, I just wanted to make sure. That's why it was on non-consent this time. Wanted you to understand why you were seeing it for the first time. If you're wondering why, why have we never seen these before? We just handle them. And they never, they don't want us to just handle them anymore. They want to make sure that the elected bodies are aware of what's going on. So, that's what the, the item is. It's safe to sign this year and we're moving forward. So.
And if I may add something, Teresa, in light of a question that councilmember Martin asked earlier. So our current capital improvements program, which was adopted late last year, is, is still what this is all based on. And that's what Teresa's telling us, is if we move any, any of that around, it may impact this, but the, the Eastern Merle Hay Road north of 62nd, as we have it in our CIP, is included in all the numbers that we're using to, for this analysis and all the northwest expansion areas. So, so everything we've got planned right now is covered with the rate increases and, and everything. It's just when we start talking about the CIP later this fall, that's where we need to be careful because if we start moving things around, it may impact where we are on those issues.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. If there are no questions or comments, do we have a motion to approve resolution number 22-200?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please.
Councilmember Cope?
Yes.
Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item 7F, consider approval of claims in the amount of $1,016,117.31. Do we have a motion to approve?
Move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion. Send your vote, please.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ready?
Yes.
Burkhart?
Yes.
Cope?
Yes.
Motion passed. Moving to city administrator staff comments. We did carry over one item from our work session and that is a
zoning code update.
Discussion on the zoning code update.
Bringing forward to you two chapters of the draft zoning code to you this evening. Those two are temporary uses and lighting standards. And I'm just going to take them one, one after another. They're both pretty, pretty small chapters, so should hopefully go fairly quick. Temporary uses is where you're going to see the most changes. We're adding in a few exemptions into the section. The first addition is essential emergency facilities, including healthcare facilities, established in response to a declared state of emergency. That one really came about kind of in recognition of the COVID-19 pandemic. You might recall, we had a testing facility that wanted to set up and they had to go through the council approval process. Well, that delayed them to be able to set up by about two weeks. Fortunately, we weren't in a surge or anything, but we want to make sure we're, we have our code set up in a way that we can immediately respond to emergencies and not have to delay establishing these facilities. So that's the purpose of that addition. And then the second exemption would be mobile food units. That's a very broad term covering any type of vehicle that can be pushed or pulled on wheels for the purpose of serving food or beverage. That, that's from the state of Iowa definition, so we use the broad terminology. Generally, if a facility is parked in a location for three days or less, it would be exempt provided it meets a few conditions. If it's going to exceed that timeframe, then they would have to go through the approval process. Down in use-specific standards, we did add in some language regarding construction-related uses, thinking in terms of job site trailers for construction projects, just trying to provide a little more guidance on those activities. And then some more specific regulations on mobile food units when they exceed that three-day window. That's a real quick summary of temporary uses and the changes there. Maybe I'll stop there before we get into lighting and see if there's any questions or if you need me to go into further detail.
Council, have any questions for Clayton?
Hearing nothing. Moving over to lighting. We currently have lighting standards for the city, but we have adopted those by resolution, not by ordinance. So what you see before you tonight is our same standards as what we currently have been using, but we'd just be adopting them by ordinance, which gives us a little more authority to enforce them. But generally, trying to make sure that our sites are not becoming too bright and that you're not giving that trespass light onto adjoining sites so that you're not disturbing neighboring properties. Gets into some technicalities of the, of the lighting standards. So, I can go into further detail as needed, answering questions, but not much in the way of change here other than going from resolution authority to ordinance authority.
So I, I do have just a really quick question. I see seasonal lighting and holiday decorations are under exemptions. Is there any dates that go along with that or is that a judgment call?
Currently, no dates, so certainly could be an addition if desired. But it's currently kind of a, a broad terminology.
I don't know that, yeah, I don't know that we need to get, I'm not a fan of lots more restrictions and dates and things like that. I just was, I was trying to think about how people might misuse that and how that would affect the neighborhood. But I don't think that we need to go there until we have a problem.
I'm not aware of it being a problem in the past, so.
Other questions or comments for Clayton?
Looking ahead, we're hoping to bring forward subdivision regulations and signage regulations to you, hopefully at your next meeting. So look for that to be coming your way. That's what we're currently working on.
Thank you, Clayton.
Welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Any other, anything else to cover under staff comments?
I have nothing else this evening, Matt.
Like Matt does.
I'll be brief. I just wanted to report back to the mayor and council. We received our public water supply survey through the DNR. Our last one was back in June of 2019. And, so this was our most recent survey. It was back in June, at the end of June, June 30th. Just happy to report that in the summary, there was no significant deficiencies found as well as there were no minor deficiencies found in the water system as well. There were a couple of requirements that they would like for us to do and that's to install a flow rate indicator on two of our lift stations, one on 54th and one on Northwest Beaver Drive. And then, just another one would be to basically ensure that our station up at Beaver Drive, which is due for a rehab, it's in our CIP, that we keep pressure above 20 PSI at all times. So that'll be something that we program into that project as well. But, just happy to report that we, we've got good marks. I'd like to thank Shane Kinsey, who's in the audience with us today. He did assist the DNR on the walk-around of the survey and going through all of the facilities and just kind of shows you what a great water staff that we do have here in the city.
Thank you, Matt. Any other staff comments? If not, city council comments. Councilman Evans? That's one ready. Councilman Burkhart?
Just a couple of things briefly. First of which, it's nearly back-to-school season. It is back-to-school season. And so I have a couple of announcements of events. If you love Johnston as much as I do, you might want to join me and others at the Booster Bash. That is the Johnston Booster Club, celebrating all the activities and getting ready to rally for the beginning of school. That will actually happen prior to the scrimmage for the football team. That's August 19th from 5:00 to 7:00 PM at the High School Stadium. Lots of different activities and teams will actually be present. So you can test your 40-yard dash skills if you want to and things like that, based on the cross-country folks. And just have a great time celebrating Johnston and Johnston schools. I also want to plug on Sunday, August 21st, the J-Rock the Block event. The Johnston Parents for Equity and Anti-Racism are holding their second event at the Simpson Barn. And that is from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. There's a whole bunch of multicultural activities and giveaways and things like that that'll be taking place to prepare folks to, to come back to school as we continue to build community. And, and just generally speaking, with back-to-school comes a lot of different changes. We kind of have gotten used to the lull of the last couple of months. So please be on the lookout for kids walking and biking. I'd hope you'd respect the stop signs on buses. And certainly, this is a more personal plea, any new drivers that are exercising their school permits as they traverse to school, since I have a 14-year-old who will be doing that as well. And generally, I want to give hats off, but also a hearty good luck and well wishes to all of our school administrators, staff, and faculty. Those folks do tremendous things and put us on the map daily because of the gifts that they bestowed to the kids of Johnston and those in the Johnston School District. So, cut them some slack, but also wish them well. They're going to need it and we appreciate them.
Councilman Martin?
I'm just going to make a short announcement. I am joining with Nate and Nate, our recreation manager, on Wednesday at 5:00 for his creek walk at Beaver Creek. It kicks off at Lou Clarkson Park. We went down there this afternoon, Nate and I, to make sure that there was enough water in the, in the creek so we could float an inner tube to collect the, we're also going to be collecting trash and you don't want to carry it in your hand, so we're going to have, I'm going to bring down an inner tube and we're going to collect it on that. And while we were down there, we watched a beaver just swim right by and into a group of trees, carrying a branch. And he didn't care anything about us and it was so cool to see that in our, you know, being there for five minutes and got to see this beaver. So, if you're into walking through the river, bring closed shoe, closed-toed shoes and 5:00 on Wednesday, Lou Clarkson Park.
Good. Thank you. Well, I would just want to say a couple of thank-yous. We had Sunday in the Park last Sunday and it was a, it was a great event for the whole 45 minutes that it lasted. But staff turned out, did a great job scooping ice cream and, and doing other things to entertain the, the families that, that came. But unfortunately, after about 45 minutes, the storm clouds rolled in and, and we had to dismantle it and send everybody home. But it was, it was a great time and it's always a great event. So, there's always next year, right? Do it again. Also, the Mayor's Run for Trails was on Saturday and that, that was an incredible event. We had about 160, I think, individuals turn out to run one of the three different races that were offered. Lots of little kids running the, the, the kids' runs as well as adults and some kids running the, running the 5K. Staff did a great job of organizing it and, and making it the success that it was. I, I think I heard probably more this year than I have in the past from parents that came up to me and said that every year they look forward to the run. It was just one of their very favorite events that we have every year because the entire family can participate in it. And we had a beautiful day for it and, and again, just a great, great turnout for that. So. Something that, this was our 11th year, so. I know it's a lot of hard work, but it's something that I think that we need to continue, continue doing in our, in our community. The Rock the Block, when is, when is that?
Sunday, from 1:00 to 4:00 at Simpson Barn.
And I don't think I have anything else to add other than if you haven't been out to the fair, get out there this year. It's going to be fairly decent weather all week long for it, so. It's a great time. It's, it's one of the things that makes us all islands to the core, so. Please take advantage of it. With that, is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we are adjourned.